Good morning, everyone. I'd like to remind everyone to make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off, uh, vibrate, vibrate position and also please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, the City of Gadsden YouTube channel, and WMGJ radio. The meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you today for life. We thank you for the blessings that you have presented over this city. We just thank you for this group that has gathered here today and the freedom to meet as we are. God, I pray for wisdom, for the sitting council. God, I pray that as they make the decisions today that not only will affect themselves but their constituents, I just pray that you'll give them the knowledge and wisdom and courage to do what is right. We're thankful that we have in attendance today our local delegation representing us as representatives and state senator in Montgomery. And God, I pray your blessings on them today, that you will anoint them with the wisdom they need. And God, thank you for allowing us to, to meet this morning and share our needs, our desires with each other. And I pray as, as we move forward, this will be a relationship that will continue to grow and grow positively. And when all is said and done, we promise to give you the praise for what you are doing. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee work session and council meeting held on February the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of February the 15th through the 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations. Shane.
Would Kathryn Shivers and Ashley and Levi Bryant come forward along with Chief Carroll and his staff?
Whereas fighting fires is one of the most hazardous professions requiring physical strength, stamina, extensive training, courage, and selfless concern for the welfare of our citizens. And whereas in addition to their daily service to communities, firefighters throughout the state and across the nation have joined the Muscular Dystrophy Association for the past 64 years in the fight against neuromuscular diseases. And whereas Gadsden firefighters have partnered with the Muscular Dystrophy Association each year through the Fill the Boot Campaign for MDA. And whereas the Muscular Dystrophy Association is extremely grateful to the City of Gadsden for their support and dedication. And whereas funds collected by the City of Gadsden firefighters assist MDA in providing medical services at local clinics, summer camp, research grants, support groups, and public education seminars at no cost to local children and families. And whereas it is appropriate for all Gadsden citizens to join the Muscular Dystrophy Association in this tribute to our firefighters. Whereas we commend the Gadsden firefighters for their efforts on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association and the families they serve. Now therefore, be it resolved that Sherman Guyton, as Mayor of the City of Gadsden, and this Gadsden City Council do hereby proclaim March 20, March 2019 as Gadsden Firefighter Appreciation Month and commend the Gadsden firefighters for their efforts on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association this 26th day of February 2019. If you all have a word, go ahead.
I go from the end of the line to the front of the line. Come here, Levi. You coming up here for me? This is my friend Levi. Well, you gotta tell them, tell them your name. Tell them your name. Say it loud.
Say Levi Bryant.
This is Levi. First of all, we'd like to say thank you to the council and the mayor for allowing us to continue to participate in these kind of fundraising events. We think they're very important, not only to people like Levi and, and to the other muscular dystrophy patients throughout this state. If you've never had an opportunity to go to Camp Askew, to the MDA camp, you really need to because it will really touch your heart to see all of these children, be able to be children in a camp environment. So we certainly appreciate it. I told Levi he was gonna be on TV today, so.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief Carroll, it's a great opportunity. We thank you and it's a great opportunity for Gadsden and the fire department to be a part of helping children and just helping people. And so we thank you for your efforts. Not only do you put your life on the line in fighting fires, but you also put your life on the line for helping people. And we do appreciate you as members of this city council as well as the citizens of Gadsden. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 324 Greenwood Avenue in District 1. This is Jesse D. James and Robert Taylor James being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll come forward and give your name and address.
Uh, I am Jesse D. James. That's an old home place that we used to own. My address, I live in Oatchee right now. State 03, Virgil Drive, Oatchee. And, uh, yes, this property was an old home place and it's a shop and apartment is what it is. The shop and apartment, they are in good shape, usable shape, but it has accumulated stuff because of me being in construction business. I've been working out of town for the last three years and things have kind of piled up. But I'm here to ask if you'll give me the opportunity to get rid of some of the stuff and police it up. I will definitely do it when it dries up, hopefully one day. But, uh, the, uh, I have got rid of some vehicles and stuff that was there. They were just like 65 model trucks and things that I kept holding on to without letting them go. There's a lot of metal items I just need to carry to the recycle place and just get rid of. And, uh, but given the opportunity, if you'll allow me to, uh, I would like to get rid of some of the stuff and hang on to, because the shop and the apartment is in good shape. It isn't usable.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves just general trash, debris, and abandoned vehicles. Case was started in March of 2018. There was a court date and appearance before the municipal judge in July of 2018. We were unsuccessful in getting a remedy for the situation there on Greenwood. What I would ask today is for a resolution from the city council to allow us to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council? And that's in my district. Mr. James, there has been a lot of complaints and one of the things that people say is that we target their stuff and they leave this undone. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to pass the, I'm going to move that we pass the resolution, but I'm quite sure that before they get to it, you'll have time enough to get your things there. But I'm going to pass the resolution so that if you don't get it done in a timely manner, then the city will be able to come and clear it up.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Uh, what type of time are you talking about? Does this mean that it's been, it's been tricky, uh, that it wasn't.
Um, but I, you know, we're, we're kind of behind right now as far as demolition is concerned. So, uh, when I say if you do it in a timely manner, I'm just gonna throw out, I'm just gonna throw out 30 days. But if it's not done in 30, you know, if it's not done in 30 days and it's still there when they come to remove it, then it will be, it will be removed. So that's the reason why I'm going to pass the resolution. I'm going to move that it be passed and then, but you still have an opportunity to clear it up before they get there.
If I get it straightened up to a point before 30 days, do I contact anyone? Mr. Harbison?
Yes, you, you contact Mr. Harbison.
All right.
All right.
Second on that motion.
Okay. I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 315 Brandon Street in District 2. And this is the state of Alabama and Floyd Wayne Holifield, D.R. Maroney being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there one, anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves trash and debris and among other things, a, a tree that has fallen on the property and it's been so long that the ivy has actually covered the tree. So another one of those cases where we've worked other properties in the past and fingers always point to this address. So we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 311 Morningview Drive. And this is in District 2, state of Alabama, and possible right of redemption of the estate of Jimmy R. Beetle, uh, AKA J.R. being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed condemnation on this property in August of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution abating of nuisance on property at 1109 Wood Avenue in District 3. Whirlah Billingsley Jr. and Kathy Lee are, are their heirs, if deceased, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed the condemnation on this property in April of last year. There was a building permit taken out in August. There have been no improvements to the property. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1109 Peach Street, Street in District 5, state of Alabama, and the right of redemptions of Susan Chivani being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone like to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a garage apartment. We filed the condemnation in May of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Just to clarify, this is the house and the garage, the entire property?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it possible that that one's eligible for, or is it too far gone, you think?
We'll, we'll look at it and my, my first impression is no.
Okay.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Tear it down. Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion, which we've already had? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement for demolition on property located at 1613 Cooper Street in District 5, state of Alabama. This is Bill R. Brown and James L. Johnson being the last known owners. And the amount is $4,241.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
A resolution authorizing agreement with the Coosa River Team Trail. And this is for the city to sponsor a series of four fishing tournaments to be held between March and October 2019, in addition to directing the City of Gadsden Super Tournaments. And the amount is $12,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt. Is there any new business?
Madam President, I have one. I'd like to ask for, I guess, immediate consideration and unanimous consent. This is Legal Department Number 107 requested by David Andrews, CMS consultant. It's a resolution authorizing a special use permit for AT&amp;T to modify their equipment at the existing wireless telecommunications facility located at 1212 Scenic Drive, Gadsden.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Like to ask to move for adoption?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new, um, department reports, committees, citizen requests? Today, we're happy to have our Edgewall County delegation visiting with us and speaking with us. On your agenda, you have District Representative Gil Isbell, but I'm gonna let District 29 at the instructions of Councilman Cannon, Becky Norstrom, to go first.
Um, do you want me to?
Yes, come up here to the podium.
Council President, I do, uh, I do appreciate you letting me go first.
I wanna say you're smart by telling them to watch their purse out there in that way.
That's, that's right, because Chris is sitting in front of it and all. But no, I'm just kidding. I've had a great day here today. We, we got to speak to you at the pre-council and I want to thank you for inviting us. I'm enjoying the collaboration. We've never had that. And I've got elected, first got elected in 2010. I've, I've said it at the mayor's meeting last week, I would like to form an alliance so that we can work together because I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna have more power to get things in our area if we lock arms and we work together. And that's city, county, and state. So I think we're moving in the right direction with that alliance with, with our delegate, state delegation. So then we're gonna have to work with the county. So anyway, we'll see what we can do there. But anyway, thank you so much. I appreciate it. And you guys all know my number and we'll be talking again soon. Thank you.
Thank you. District 28, Gil Isbell.
It's my representative. Come on.
Yeah, he's gonna build us a highway.
It's coming soon.
I got your back.
Please, no comments from the audience. No. As you know, I am the new district representative in District 28. It's an honor to be here and thank you to the council. Not sure where Mayor Guyton is, but.
We aren't either.
But it truly is an honor to be here and thank you very much. And again, just reflecting what Becky said, we're here to work with you, to get things done. We're not here to tell you anything. We're here to execute what you guys want in the future. We all have ideas, we're meeting together. We may not agree on everything, at least we're sitting at the table. And that's what it's about. We look forward to working with you in the future and in any way, reach out to me or any of the other, you know, legislative members and we will be there to help. Thank you for allowing us to come today and have a wonderful day.
All right. Representative Craig Lipscomb, District 30.
Thank you for having us today. Am I the most bearded representative that you've ever had show up in council meeting? It means I'm serious. Um, I just wanted to thank you guys for having us here today. Um, I, I know most of you guys and, um, and I just wanted to introduce myself as your legislator. I have a request while I'm here, if I may. As a seasoned fly fisherman, that's something that I'm very passionate about. I travel the country to many parts to spend lots of money to catch pretty little trout in clear water streams. And so do a lot of Gadsden residents. There's a Rainbow Fly Fishing Club, not to be confused with Rainbow City, but as in Rainbow Trout Fly Fishing Club that, um, I have been coordinating with over the past, oh, I don't know, four or five years, discussing with them, how can we bring a fly fishing opportunity to our region? And it only seemed logical to us to investigate the potential for putting perhaps some rainbow trout in the Nakalila Falls watershed. The reason being is because the habitat is perfect for it. If you look at the geography of the region, we're at a similar latitude and we're at the similar elevation to Helen, Georgia, which has a tremendous trout fishing, um, opportunity. And in North Georgia, their trout fishing, um, uh, revenue that they incur on an, on an average basis is right around $20 million a year. So if we were to only achieve a small fraction of that in this area, and it would be very exclusive to Gadsden as the state of Alabama is concerned, uh, we could potentially see a great ecotourism opportunity for us to bring in these people to not only pay for a trout fishing license to go into the park and fish, they would also be, um, visiting our retail stores around the area and more importantly, staying at all of our lodging, all of which is a benefit to the city of Gadsden. There is some upfront cost, as you can imagine. I've imagined that in, in, within a couple of years, that this will be self-perpetuating, that these fees that they're paying to get into the park will pay for the maintenance of this program. But what I'm here to ask the council to do officially is to provide in your budget for next year, beginning October 1, $10,000 to Parks and Recreation so that they may be able to purchase from Cherokee County, from one of their farms, about 2,000 pounds worth of rainbow trout to be dispersed in the watershed. And that will kick off this project. As you, many of you may not know, rainbow trout like cooler weather. And so this fly fishing season would be occurring generally from October through late spring around here, even though we know some of the fish will hold over in some of those deeper holes in that area and they'll get large and they'll become trophy trout for people to fish for. Nonetheless, some of them will go downstream and will become bass food at some point. So, um, we will want to repopulate those waters on an, on an annual basis. Again, at some point, the fees that the Parks and Recreation draw will pay for this project, but we'd like to ask for the next couple of years, your support in ensuring that it is a, um, a well-received and proper endeavor. I've already spoken with Edgewall County Greater Gadsden Tourism. They're gonna be promoting this vigorously for your benefit and for the benefit of the region at large. They may be even creating multi, um, multi-species fishing tournaments, maybe crawby, bass, trout, something to that effect. So we have their support. And finally, because I think fly fishermen know what is best for this particular endeavor, I would ask that you create a subcommittee or a committee of some sort of three of the members of the Rainbow Fly Fishing Club, who they've already recommended to me, to make decisions in regards to the everyday affairs of this fly fishing endeavor, not monetary decisions, but all of the other ancillary decisions. And they would be under the, um, under the leadership of Parks and Recreation. And so.
I, I was gonna ask, have you had a conversation? Because I think that would probably fall, I know the budget part of approval would fall with us, but a conversation with, with the mayor's office and the Parks and Recreation Department?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be good to have a conversation with them.
We have had ongoing discussions with the gen at Parks and Recreation. They are all on board. They're very excited about this because this gives them, um, a great deal of revenue potential beyond Christmas at the Falls and other events that they're holding up there. It's kind of that, it's gonna fall in between those areas and provide some good feel.
Okay, all right.
Any questions?
I, I think that's great. Representative Lipscomb, obviously the future of this Gadsden, I think tourism is a huge comp.
a huge component of that, and in the sooner we recognize that and start facilitating that tourism dollar, as a couple of past governors have said, you know, that's tourism money is clean money. You know, they come in, they spend it, and they leave, and they don't necessarily represent the same social impact that a full-time resident does. So from an economic standpoint, tourism is a great resource. And I'll go ahead, I agree, you should, you should work with the mayor's office, but I'll go ahead and go out on a limb and make a deal with you. If you get the cities an extra penny on that gas tax this legislative session, I'll give you the ten thousand dollars out of my discretionary funds.
I will promise you that we will endeavor to...
He likes stripes, so...
I appreciate you being here, and I look forward to you guys working for the best interest of the city.
Thank you. Have a good day.
All right, thank you for coming. Last but not least, the lone senator, Senator Andrew Jones, District Ten.
Thank you for having us here today. Enjoyed speaking with you all at the pre-council meeting, enjoyed fellowshipping with many of you at the Mayor's Association the other night. I'll just echo what's been said, you know, we want to work together. We see ourselves in many ways as a bridge between the city councils in this county and the county commission, and we're happy to develop relationships and work together to foster cooperation wherever we can. What I said at the Mayor's Association, I'll say again, we're looking at three major issues this legislative session, and we're keeping our eye on. One of those is a lottery bill, one of those is prison reform, and the other is infrastructure, or as some may say, a possible gas tax, a revenue-raising measure. As I said in the pre-council meeting, we are fully committed that if we're asking our taxpayers to do more, and we're not to that point yet, I don't think any of us are, because we haven't seen the legislation, but if we're going to ask people to do more out of their paycheck and out of their pocketbook, we need to do something here, we need to get something here to show for it. And we all know that seven fifty-nine, South Side Bridge, and a completed four eleven are top of the list. So we're keeping our eye on infrastructure. We're going to be, we're having a delegation meeting this afternoon. We're throwing around a notion, I'll just give you a heads up, as I mentioned at the Mayor's Association, on possibly creating a local infrastructure fund of some sort to be able to allow us to match with Alabama Department of Transportation, as other big municipalities have done. If they're able to put up ten percent or fifteen percent to match, a lot of times their projects get moved up to the top of the list. So we're looking at that as an option. I hope you'll forgive us, we may have to skip out early. We're meeting with the sheriff at noon today for a lunch meeting, so that's, if you see us all get up and leave, don't think we've been offended, we're just heading out to a lunch meeting. But appreciate you guys having us. Anything we can do to help, just come see us. We will have offices set up at some point soon in the courthouse there on, I think it's the second floor, is that right, Gil? On the second floor. So we'll have a local presence as well, and you can come, come see us there, or we can come over here and see you, because we'll be really close. So, thank you very much.
Okay. We thank you all for coming, and that's why we wanted you to speak down here, because we now have you on TV, and we have you on tape, and we can replay our tape. But we, we thank you for coming, and we appreciate it. At this time, we'll have remarks by the council.
Thank you, Madam President. I do appreciate the delegation actually coming out and actually being willing to speak to us, and that's meaningful. Please understand and note that regardless as to the positions that we may have to take with certain items, we're very much for collaboration. So please understand that. And to Senator Jones's point about maybe targeting or earmarking dollars, you know, we're very much in favor of that. As a matter of fact, I think we demonstrated it the last time we passed the local tax. We earmarked it to certain projects, and people are realistically seeing those projects come to fruition. So we have a model that we're happy to share, you know, but, but again, I think you guys know that part's not rocket science. It's just a matter of getting through the, the issue of figuring out where the funding's going to come from. One thing that I stated upstairs, and again, I appreciate you for entertaining our ideas and our issues. One thing that I stated upstairs that I'll state here, is we have a concern about, you know, an equal share of the responsibility and funding as it relates to the state. We take on a lot of properties that the state owns and upkeep them and maintain them with little to no return from the state. And so we need an advocate in that regard to help recover for our taxpayers those monies. And so again, we would ask that you help us in that regard. You know, don't shy away from that fight, because we haven't, but we also haven't shied away from the responsibility. And, you know, and if that's what we should expect going forward, that we do the state's work for them, then we'd love for somebody to just tell us that, and we'll move on. But I don't think that's the case. And again, my prayer and my belief is that you guys will support us and advocate for us in that regard, and thank you in advance for that. And the last thing that I'll say as it relates to that is that, as it relates to the, to any proceeds that come out of this deliberation about, about infrastructure funding, please be mindful, again, a point I made upstairs, it cost us to maintain a block. It cost us almost double what it cost the county to maintain that same block. And again, I don't even think they would argue with that. So, but, but as it stands right now, they get about twenty-five percent of the revenue, and we get about five, as it stands right now, which is, you know, I don't care how you look at it, it's really not something that, that makes a whole lot of sense. So again, we're in need of an advocate in that regard, and so that's what we ask. Madam President, it's all I have.
Councilman Worthy.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say to the delegation, thank you for coming and speaking with us, and I know one of the councilmen said it was my dream for y'all to come here jokingly, but it's not about us, it's about the community. It's about the people that we work for, and if we collaborate together and work together, not just with this delegation and the city council and the Edgewall County commissioners, if we all work together, we can move not only this city forward, we can move this county forward, and it all, it would benefit us all, not just some of us, because we're all really in the same boat, palling the same way, I'm hoping, and maybe we'll get to where we're trying to go. And I just want to say thank you, and I know, I have confidence that you all will fight for our fair share, just like Councilman Williams was saying, you know, you can do the best you can do, and that's all we're asking you to do, because I know when you first get elected, you think you can go in there and you can change the world. I know I did. Then you get up here and you hit this brick wall, you just one vote, you know, and it's always not going to go your way. So just as long as you continue to fight, and I'm going to promise you, I'm not going to say anything negative about you all in the paper, and we're going to disagree, but I'm going to come to you, and each one of you and talk to you. I'm not going to say anything negative in the paper. That's not how I do business. And with District Twenty Eight, Isbell, we're going to work together, okay? Thank you so much. And I'm not always talking about working together and collaborating. Right now, myself and Commissioner, the new commissioner that's just come on, we're going to have a meeting together. We're going to have a District Three and a District Five meeting together because it overlaps, and we'll give you more information on it when we set a date. Thank you.
Councilman Bat.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to echo a heartfelt thank you to the legislative delegation for coming here today. It's real honored to have you guys and ladies, and we appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to come, and just echo what these guys have already said, you know, the working together. I'm obviously new on the council, about a hundred and ten days. I see three new folks out there that are new, so we have something in common, which I think is a clean sheet of paper. I'm looking at things from a, from a different perspective probably than Mr. Echols. You know, it's, I have to chart my course, and so I would encourage y'all to do the same and to work collaboratively to Councilman Worthy's comment. Craig Enser is also a new county commissioner. Craig and I have had a couple of conversations, and we've actually met together at Your Brown School, which is in both of our districts, and have made financial commitments there out of our discretionary fund, so he and I are working together on a really nice project. So I think it's a new day. It's a new day for Gaston, a new day for Edgewall County, and, you know, what has happened in the past, nobody can change. All we have is today and what's tomorrow, so I encourage us all to kind of go down, down that path, and I wish you luck in Montgomery. I know that's going to be a pretty big challenge, so we'll be thinking about you guys, praying for you as you go and represent all of, all of your constituents. Want to update you on District Four. We had, I had my third meeting, met with the Edenwood neighborhood last night at the Family Life Center at First Baptist Church. About ten to twelve folks came. We stayed about two hours. I want to thank Brian Harbison and Heath Williamson for being there, and also the Gas and Police Department. We had very good questions from the folks downtown, and I think they received good answers from these folks that were there last night. And just stay tuned for the next meeting. I've said maybe about every ninety days, so we'll see how that goes. Definitely want to hear from my constituents in District Four. I'm always available. My card has my personal cellphone on it, so I'm pretty easy to find. So I just want to thank everybody that did come out to all three meetings, and just look forward to being a part of moving our city forward. And thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson.
First of all, quick administrative note, I'll be having my, my District Five meeting tonight at the Gaston Public Library at five thirty. Everyone's encouraged to attend. We'll have some city officials there to help answer some questions about nuisance abatement and trash collection and all those things that we have to deal with in District Five. Also, I would just want to run down a quick list. Ms. Barbara Harden did receive your phone call over the weekend, and I've spoken with the Public Works Department about the flooding issues. I'll be happy to follow up on that with you next week. Ms. Sandra Coats, I left you a voicemail about your issues on Chestnut Street. Please return my call. Mr. Whaley Tetter in South Gaston, I've also passed that information on about illegal dumping on the corner of Harrison and Hickory Street. A lot of issues in South Gaston. And Leathia Marshall on Seventh Avenue, I also spoke with the building inspector about the issues with the neighbor and the vehicles being parked on the property. So hopefully, we'll have some action on that soon. There are some wheels in motion. And finally, just to the delegation, I'll echo some of these comments, but I'll also say I reserve the right to talk bad about you in the paper. So, seriously, you know, being a small business owner that was part of somewhat of a new and innovative industry in this state, I had to spend a lot more time than I ever cared to in Montgomery, and I understand the challenges that you guys face walking those halls every day, and I know it's not as easy as it may seem from the outside, and there's always circumstances, but I don't think there's anybody in the room, like I said, with the, with the matter concerning the county and the jail. When two parties come together and work in good faith, I believe good things can happen, and I believe sincerely that all four of you are working in good faith to do what's best for the city of Gaston, and you understand the role that we play as the county seat for Edgewall County and the financial burden that comes along with that. So I appreciate your representation. I appreciate you being willing to come and be a part of this meeting, and I look forward to collaborating with you guys throughout the next quadrillion.
Councilman Cannon.
Have you ever noticed every time when it's Councilman Cannon's turn, all these guys on this side turn and look at me? Because I tell it like it is, and they know, they never know what I'm going to say, and they all just look at me. So I just pause for a minute, and I always look their direction, watch them watch me. But anyway, I do appreciate the delegation being here. I'm going to say it the best way I know how to say it. Y'all don't cross us, well, we won't cross y'all. We want to work together. If y'all going to pass something that pertains to this city, for instance, like the last elected Board of Education thing, elected board, just please come and talk to some of us, or talk to the mayor's office, or Shane, or somebody can convey with us, you know what's going on. Just don't throw it in our lap like it was this last time, and I would, really would appreciate that. I'm looking forward to working with y'all. I'm going to make a little nice and smooth statement today, so they won't be getting on me after this. I'm going to turn my comments over to Mr. Reed. Thank you.
That's why we look at him. Councilman Reed.
I'm going to move my chair up here and let him fall out. How about that? Woo. Yeah, Curtis. Hey. Simply put, y'all, I am glad you're here. I said it upstairs, we've gone pretty well without representation for about fifteen, twenty years, give, give or take a year or two. I think Becky's finally got somebody to work together, keep the money flowing up here instead of down yonder. It's real basic. We're going to be here for y'all, and I know y'all going to be here for us. Basically, that's the way it is. Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
You're welcome. It's twelve o'clock. I just want to make one announcement. Gaston City High School is proud to announce that Alabama A&amp;M University, this is the twenty nineteen Presidential Community Outreach Bus. Dr. Andrew Higginie Junior, the president, will be at the Gaston City High School Gymnasium on Friday, March the first, at ten thirty, and he will be giving scholarships to Gaston City High School and Edgewall County students, and you all are cordially invited.
That's Alabama A&amp;M's president, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Our university. If nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.[1760.53]